Can I have the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fasting?
Here.
Bush, Dolphin?
Here.
Gunlaw, here.
Here.
Steppes?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
I have a short discussion. Foodservice report and budget.
We have Lisa Crowe and Nancy Smith here as our TACR representatives. The request was from the board to just give an update on the budget for this year and a little bit about foodservice counts and overall summaries. We do have a report that's on the table if you didn't receive one, just raise your hand if you've got some extras floating around. Welcome Lisa and Nancy.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us here tonight and it's been awhile since I've been able to see the board so thank you for the opportunity. We just wanted to go through a few highlights from last year, talk about some goals for this year and then do the financial update which is in the back, very back page and meal count chart. So program highlights, you know, as working with a contractor, we always, we honor whatever we set out to say the program's going to do whether it loses money or not, we would actually offset that loss which we did the first couple of years. So with that being said, last year we were a little bit closer, we were able to make, to actually purchase a dishwasher between the previous year's profits, well, I shouldn't say profit, guarantee plus whatever we actually made last year. So I kind of looked at the dishwashing costs and reviewed that report this morning. So we're happy to be able to say that. The dishwasher is working well, right Nancy?
Yes.
And we are very grateful for that piece of equipment. We also actually featured local apples the last couple of years and I believe we did so this year as well from Mission Center. There's just a couple of pictures on the pages behind the agenda and a school picnic with no teachers in it. It was like Nancy sent some pictures. Last year at Thanksgiving, we did the pay it forward Thanksgiving meals that was provided by TACR so for needy families within the community. It was the directive charge of the director to reach out to some people, their staff or people within the district that wouldn't have a Thanksgiving meal and Nancy delivered that meal to them. And so that was the pay it forward Thanksgiving meals last year.
Thank you.
So that was well received. I think we only did 10 families, but 10 is better than zero and you know, it was, they were very appreciative.
Are you doing that again this year?
TACR is doing it again except that we're not taking any additional meals as far as company-wide because we're also helping Houston. We have like three or four private schools there and so both of the meals are going there. So we're not going to say, okay, we can do another 30 or whatever, they're not taking any more than we did, you know, last year. So yes, but probably not more than 10. That's a roundabout way for that, but just because, in fact, I was talking to Sean TACR on Friday and they've been cooking in their commissary up in Minneapolis just with 30, I think, 32,000 meals or whatever for the United States, it's just a lot of production. So we're working on all of that. We also, so it's a pretty touching experience when you are able to do that and help out a family. Theme days, we like to have fun here in foodservice because food is fun, should be fun. So St. Patrick's Day was one of those theme meals and we've got Mr. Francois handing out desserts, so that was a really good picture.
And the corned beef and cabbage we ran out of. I couldn't believe that the kids were, they really liked that meal, so that was a nice, yeah, but I'd try it.
Good dough was a hit.
Yeah, and we'll do it again this year and do more. And so one of the things that we have found at the middle school and high schools, they really embrace more from scratch cooking at this age level than maybe so much at just elementary is more finger kid-friendly foods. So when Nancy does grilled cheese or hamburgers on the grill or on the flat top grill, the kids get really excited, which you're doing next week, right Nancy? Grilled cheese, which was actually made to order and not done in the oven. So we found a way to try to use the equipment that's in the kitchen and try to use it as creatively as we can without having to work for it. The other thing that Nancy started last year is off-site program meals and so there's the special, what is the category called?
Alternative high school.
Alternative high school. So we've been servicing the alternative high school since last year and we're doing so this year as well. So I guess they're going to take a stab at doing some hot meals this year and figure that out. So that's helped the program as well because the revenue goes to the program. And then of course catered events. So our catering actually for the month of September, only a one month to evaluate, is a little higher than last year, but all catering events that are done are done for foodservice. So all the monies go right back into the district so that ends the Fund 50. So it was, last year was actually higher than previous year and this year was a little bit higher than last year. So Nancy has a couple of things coming up and if there's an opportunity to do like a big banquet or something for the students here, we will bring in more than just Nancy, we'll bring in chefs and make it really special. And so if there's ever a need for something a little bit larger, Nancy does have the support of the culinary team and myself to pull that off. So we love doing some things like that. In fact, last year in Wopon, we did the Center Herd Pole luncheon. It was, we did it five years prior, you have to have the venue to do it and they paid for a lot of the fun stuff too, but it's just getting it organized and executed and the food part of it is our part and it was fabulous. So again, in those venues that have that space and that opportunity, it's an honor to be asked to do that. Program goals for this next year. I know Nancy already did some sampling in September, honey sampling, so that was a hit at the elementary with cornbread. And we like to sample the harvest of the month, so we have a schedule of what that is, fruits, vegetables, legume. And so when we can, when Nancy can plant it and get, break away from the high school to be able to sample over at the elementary and engage the students into trying some new things, that's, you know, we want to do more of that this year. I think we just did it a couple of times last year. We also want to increase, as always, our program goal is to meet or exceed the budget and we do that by increasing breakfast and lunch participation. And the other thing that kind of happened this year is the vending switched a little bit. We used to be in our own vending machines and Pepsi came in and we're kind of sharing that. We don't have to fill the vending machine. So Nancy said, well, it's gonna, that's gonna take a little bit from our vending revenue that we had planned. So she worked with the principal and we actually sell that last period which is a study hall kind of, or for special. So she'll bring out, you know, all of her things, fresh cookies, things, sandwiches and actually been able to sell a few things at that period which helps offset any vending revenue that we may have lost or, I don't know that we've lost it at all, but it doesn't really show through because she's selling things. So she took the initiative and said, hey, you know what, how about these kids, are they hungry at that last period? And then sure enough.
Oh, Mr. Mitch came to me.
Oh, was Mitch here?
He came to me, he goes, what do you think about it? And I'm like, okay.
So I was here last Monday when we came out to sell and the kids were like, yeah, I'll take that. And you know, it's just something else to help them tide them over for the next thing that they may have after school. Kids in the Kitchen Cooking Class, that was one of our goals last year. We didn't achieve that goal, but this year that is one of our hot topics. Kids in the Kitchen Cooking Classes for fourth and fifth grade students. And it's an after-school cooking class, parents have to give permission. Chef Michelle and Stotin will help Nancy to do the first one or two classes and then from that point it's up to the director to actually continue to execute it. So it's just, for example, snacks after school, some healthy snacks, how to make pizza, some maybe different cutting skills and things that they can do and learn on their own. Michelle's done made your homemade pasta, I was involved in that class, and Stotin, but she's a, that's kind of her skillset. So I don't know if we'll get to that here, but you never know. And actually pasta's pretty easy to make, it's just a little messy. And then limited time offers. So one of the things that TACR started new last year company-wide is that we actually put out a limited time offer, one day meal thing for middle school and high school and it's something that's really not school lunchish, I guess. And something that's different that they, you know, you wouldn't, we couldn't really afford to do it on the school lunch menu, twice a week or twice a month. So something new and different. And we did that a couple of times last year. There, the directors have a monthly, every month there's something that comes out from TACR corporate and they can say, okay, does this make sense or is this not going to make sense for my unit? Because everybody's areas throughout the country are very different as far as their taste and even in Wisconsin actually. So those are our goals, is to actually do that a couple more, a couple more times than we have last year. So four times would be our goal. And Sue, financial update. So this is kind of, is in the back page and how we interpret this report really is a three-year trend. The percentages are based on ADA, average daily participation. So again, this is just comparing September. So this month of September this year, last year and the year prior. And it's all based off the claims that were submitted. So if the data seems, doesn't seem right, just let me know. But again, it's all based off the claims that have been submitted, which is based off the Skyward Report. So in September this year, you can see the enrollment, average daily attendance, 708, which is higher than the last couple of years, which is good for September. Students approved for paid, free, reduced, our free students have gone up this year compared to last. As you can see from 1516, they actually went down and we felt that hit last year as far as reimbursements. It's gone up this year, which as far as the free lunches reimbursed at $3.29 a meal this year from the federal government and five cents a meal from the state. So you know, so when we lose participation in that area, sometimes it hurts the program financially. And then students approved for reduced. So that, basically our breakfast is slightly up 7.2% from the previous, well, from last year and the previous year. So again, based on percentages. We want to keep that program going. Nutrition break is very popular here, however, it's not always just the whole meal. I mean, kids understand you have to take a, you know, half cup fruit at breakfast as well as the entree in order to qualify and sometimes they just go so fast, they just want to pay à la carte. So we're going to keep that and educating the kids at that time period. Total lunch in September, based off percentages, we're actually over the last couple of years, so that's good. Again, in September, that's really healthy to see because usually in September, all the little kids want to bring their lunchboxes and try out the new lunchbox for mom and dad. And so September is usually our slowest month, as is May because of all of the field trips. Meal equivalent meals, adults are about the same. Meal equivalent meals, equivalent meal is all à la carte or all revenue other than breakfast and lunch participation. So à la carte, vending, catering, all of that divided by a factor. So we are trending up for the last couple of years, so that's good. Nancy and her team work really hard to, you know, keep some exciting things in à la carte and making, they make a lot of homemade things so the kids usually buy most of it already. And it's homemade, so it's made, you know, it's fun and it's not always the same. So overall, total meals for breakfast, lunch and equivalents are 653 and you divide that by, this number's actually divided by the enrollment, not the average daily, I'm sorry, it's divided by the average daily attendance, not the enrollment. And so again, we're trending higher than the last couple of years, so very, very positive. À la carte sales for the first month are really, are trending well. We, I think I budgeted at 300, so we're close to 300, we're not quite there yet, but so our first month was down a little bit. And then as is the average daily revenue is up. So healthy start to the year, it's just month one, so. And you know, we look at this every month, so we have the data. If you ever have any questions or want to know anything. Food cost is a little higher than we anticipated this first month, but we'll continue to work on that. So does anyone have any questions or comments or feedback?
Actually pulling out the information out of some of the stuff that Lucas sent us in the past. The dishwasher was roughly 23,000, so we actually had a loss last year of 7,100, correct? According to school patricisms showing that, if that's right. I guess Lisa, I'm kind of wondering, why do you guys want to service Mineral Point when you're giving up your management fee? I mean, what do you make, what's the incentive for you to service us?
Well, we're still making up the G and A fee, but we're giving up the management fee. So there's still, there's still some, we're sunk, we're still making some.
You're not making a lot and it's hard to make a lot when you're, when you're got small numbers.
Yeah.
I guess I'm a little concerned that you have staff changed almost entirely twice in three years. I think part of that is because the lunchroom staff are the lowest paid in the district. And I think that's a major problem. I don't know if you still practice that somebody's working three hours and they don't get their work done, they punch out and they have to work their last 15 minutes to half an hour of their own time. That actually wasn't started by you guys, that actually was started by Luke. When he took over the hot lunch program, they said that you get six hours if you don't get your work done because he argued that it was a shift and not an hourly wage, which quite honestly, we should have been turned in to the state because that really wasn't legal. Meals, I think, are a little skewed and I don't know how you guys count that à la carte as a meal.
There's an equivalent factor that's established with the bid.
So if I buy, for example, I can't remember everything that's got on the à la carte, I went over the look, but it wasn't posted. So if I buy a cookie, for example, and two other items, that's considered a meal then?
No. No.
If you, if you, I know what you're trying to say. Let's say I don't want the lunch, I just want the sandwich. I just want, okay, so that would just be.
So then it's under, and they à la carte.
An à la carte price card.
Isn't that actually higher than if they just took the meal?
It is, well, it depends on, so.
It depends on what it is and, or it's that there are some students too that'll take a meal and then buy an additional slice of pizza or another hot dog or.
So that slice of pizza in a sense.
Is à la carte.
Is à la carte, but then is also considered a meal?
No. Well, no, so the equivalent factor is, I just looked it up, is 3.268. So every year it changes and then, but this is what it was established with the bid three years ago because we're in year four. And so like this year, any business that went out for 17, 18, it's almost $3.50, $3.50. So they take the free rate plus the commodity, which is almost 24 cents a meal. So what USDA says, you have to take all of your à la carte revenue dollars, also the catering. Yes, and that's all they're going to do.
So if you have $350 in.
À la carte.
À la carte, you roughly have 10 extra meals. $3.50 and then 350.
Well.
100.
No, 100 extra. No, 100 extra. Yeah, so that's why, so that's why, and that's a federal rule. And the reason why they do that Jeff is because when school lunch programs need to map out their labor schedules, we benchmark it off of productivity by meals per labor hour. And if you didn't have all the revenue in the program, then you wouldn't have enough staff to work it, it wouldn't balance.
And I totally understand if you've got to pay what you can afford to pay. I understand that, but indirectly, these people are employees of the school and it's like.
As we are.
And when we started, it was like a 1350 or higher and you guys are in the 11, $12 range, that doesn't really black you out. And it's really not fair because our full-time equivalent are getting benefits on top of it, which you guys are not offering. So it's like, it's a double-edged sword, but I just, I just really don't understand why you guys want to service Mineral Point when you really can't be making anything for the effort and the headaches.
Well, we like it here. And we like Mineral Point, yeah.
So it's three cents a meal, is that correct, or two and a half that you make?
Well, we work for a fee, so a G and A.
Well, but your fee is always, but your fee you've given back.
So, so this is part of it too, so.
So 29,000.
Yeah.
So actually you are making some money.
Some money, yeah. However, if we lose, if like the first year, we've never made our full fee, and answer to your question, G and A or.
Well, it's really hard with the numbers, it's just that simple.
Right. That's why you had a shared director between Mount Orup and Mineral Point for a while, because you're sharing the leadership meal cost.
Correct.
It looks like the, I mean, the number of kids partaking of foodservice has increased in the time.
But it's actually now card.
Haven't heard the complaints that we heard, you know, in the past, so.
How is the company doing as a whole Lisa? Throughout the mission, I'm just curious.
Well.
Customers last year versus this year?
We actually in Wisconsin added one, I don't know, in K-12, in between Minnesota and Wisconsin, we added eight new districts, K-12 districts. One was in Altoona, in Eau Claire, and outside of Eau Claire, which I've had the opportunity to open and spent a couple of months up there seemingly. And so we've added new, I mean, we keep adding a few new here. We haven't added a ton in Wisconsin in the last couple of years, but we have more, you know, in Wisconsin, we have more. When you look at all the management companies, we have, there's five of us, we have half of all the business. So we have almost 50 contracts, so we're, we keep plugging it away. You know, you lose some every, I mean, you win some, you lose some and, but real healthy, I think, there's a couple, some private sectors, you know, in Texas, we have one DM that's just responsible for all private schools, so.
And when you guys have like pull-up the September menu, when you guys have cannibaling corn, is that something that's offered every day?
Just on the one day, it'll, it'll, it'll say, if you're like what the harvest of the month.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is, I mean, we're not getting anywhere near the free, the fresh produce that you did initially.
The Department of Defense produce is coming. I was having trouble logging in, DOD, so they'll be coming. And last year too, I started in November and then it was able to pull us through January. So we, you know, we got their lettuce and their apples, I don't know, I think oranges.
So do you have salad bar every day?
Yeah.
We have a fruit vegetable bar.
We don't have salad on it every week, three times a week probably, right?
Yeah. Yeah, usually it goes, it's a nice to-go with pizza day. So they get their salad and pizza and orange dressing.
And we should have, and again, it's what they market. So like watermelon was good to start off with this, you know, but it went up quite fast, quite fast. So I mean, it's one thing to afford it.
Broccoli and lettuce is are really high. So we're trying to watch that and, but I have commodity frozen broccoli, so we'll do roasted broccoli and we'll do, you know, some. So and it's, you know, they may not be crazy about it, so we don't make a ton of it, but the more they see it, the more they're liking it and the taste is, I don't know, we've got a lot of adults that really enjoy it.
I didn't try this cheese until three months ago, I was like, because I ate it before the piece, I write something, I should have to try something 30 times before you can taste it. And honest to God, I was almost 30, but 30th time, I'm like, God, this is really good. Under your, under your financial update, Lisa, you have the honor guarantee, you want to explain that for the board?
I believe the budget that you have in the board packet is, it's pretty close to break even. So for this next year for 1718, so let's say the program makes $5,000 more than we projected, then that goes into your general fund. I mean, so it's not like we keep any more than we projected. If we lose 5,000, then that comes out of our additional G and A fee, not just the fee. But if we feed more kids, I mean, that's, we're headed in the right direction and that's what we're, we're working towards.
Any questions for Lisa? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the snacks.
That helps with snacks. Hopefully you like the cucumber water.
Cucumber water.
The budget?
Yes, before you is the budget for approval as well as certifying a levy, two different motions that need approval for tonight. The 1718 budget, as it was posted in the paper, and I'll show some updates to that budget since it was posted. But just starting with revenue, you'll notice that most of our revenue comes from property taxes and state equalization aid and that is always a balancing act between the two. And if you'll notice from last year to this year, the state equalization aid dropped roughly about $75,000. And you'll see then the property taxes builds back in, that's $75,000. So just to kind of show you the numbers here, I guess I can't highlight that, but state equalization aid down 75 causes the property taxes to go up by 75. That, that relationship is all part of the revenue cap, so we cannot exceed that cap. So the more the state funds us, the less we levy for property taxes, the less the state funds us, the more we levy for property taxes. But all of it is that cap, so that you can't just levy indefinitely. So that would be one place that I would just draw your attention. What is also not referenced here, but I always think it's interesting for the board to know, is that in the revenue calculation sheet, and I'll share that with you shortly, there's actually a line deduct that is for the Milwaukee Charter Program. And that deduction this year was $63,000. They came right off the top of our 80 and it's diverted to support charter schools in the Milwaukee area. That is something that has always baffled me from a board level because that's $63,000 could certainly support us in many different ways and that is dollars that we don't have that Milwaukee receives. As we look at the expenditures, you'll notice that the salaries are up roughly $300,000. That reflects the overall salary increases coupled along with the increase in support staff salaries. We redid the salary schedule this year. Benefits stayed relatively flat, they're up about $80,000 across the board. And again, this is over 100 employees in the district. You'll see some slight changes in the non-capital items and the capital items, just essentially shifting the dollars. Non-capital is up 100,000, capital is down 100,000. It just shifts the target from large purchases to more intermediate needs. And the other area I would draw your attention to is the Fund 50, you just heard that report. Fund 50 is in revenue, you'll see 364 and expenditures 364. And that is the same with special education. You'll see special aid, special education transfer, $1,001,000 and then an expenditure of $1,001,000. So those numbers are put in and they're backed right out. Even though they reflect an increase in revenue and an increase in expenditures, they're, they're always budget neutral in that they, they don't really impact the overall budget. So what you see at the, at the bottom is a net where our revenues are outpaced by expenditures of by $139,000. And that is fully anticipated to be recovered by the end of the year so that our actual budget would reflect the balanced budget much like it did last year. We went into the fiscal year in a shortfall of $23,000. We not only exceeded that money, but we also built up our Fund 46. So I anticipate the same happening again. Let me pause there to see if there's some follow-up questions on the budget before we move to the board.
What was our surplus at the end of 1617 Luke, if it's Fund 46?
We don't have that listed as an actual, it's still in the form of being audited, but if I recall correctly, we put the Fund 46 increase. We approved it as a board at our May meetings, our June meetings, that had to be posted before the end of June.
Was it in our, was it in the board book resources?
It would be in our resources, I can pull up the minutes. Around 200,000.
Did we make it like not to exceed a certain amount, any on something?
We did do the full amount and we probably pulled up.
June?
Yeah. District management's a transfer of 100,000. The minutes from this meeting would reflect, I think the board went further than that and we were able to put the full amount into Fund 46, which would be in next month's meeting minutes, I'm pretty sure it's not going to be in this, these minutes would reflect the month before. So let me go back and to. Then to. And that would be July, so I'll move to our meeting again.
I think you went to the same one, didn't you?
I think this is July, which would give me the July seventeen board minutes. Motion by member Bastin to approve transfer from Fund Ten to Forty-Six, second by member Bush. It doesn't state amount here in the minutes that reflect anything more than a one hundred K. Questions?
I have some questions.
Please.
Can you go into your comparison? You had sent out something, I think it was October second or fourth, and it was a preliminary budget document. It was a Excel spreadsheet, and, um, at the bottom of it, um, you have, let's see. The budget for twenty sixteen seventeen was eleven million five ninety-six.
And that would probably represent Fund Ten and Fund Twenty-Seven, the operating budget. Probably was not pulling in some of these other budgets like Fund Fifty, so maybe not, like, do you see a Fund Fifty in there?
I, I mean, this is, has sixteen hundred line items.
Yeah.
I don't remember, I don't remember seeing the food service.
No, I'm not. It's a paper topic, can you find it in there?
I'm not going to search it.
Yeah. So there's two things that I think would be, um, important to understand, is that typically we, we break out Ten and Twenty-Seven, because that's where the bulk of your operations go. We can increase Fund Fifty food service operations, but the revenue and expenditures again are in offset, so you're probably not seeing the reflection of those two items. The other piece is that, um, what changed from that October second report to post October thirteen is that only looks at the expenditure side and it doesn't take in the revenue side. The revenue side comes in once we know property evaluations and, um, the other part of, of the final aid package, which I can share, it's a different document. But when we only look at the revenue side, you're just seeing expenditures, and you don't see how some of those numbers might be offset then by the revenues there.
But this is just expenditures.
That is correct.
And the other items were, that just confused me. And this is for last year. It had for, alright. So that was the budget. Then it said revised budget was eleven seven, something. And then it said for the FY activity.
Fiscal year activity?
Okay. And that had eleven point nine. And is fiscal year activity actual expenditures?
That would be more reflective of the actual expenditures, correct.
So that's where I was confused. If the, if the actual expenditures last year were eleven nine, then I'm confused by this chart, because that is a three hundred thousand dollar difference.
I think the, the first question to make sure we're doing apples to apples comparison is looking at the budget expenditures, total expenditures. If it doesn't tie to the eleven six twenty-seven, then we're not looking at comparable funds. So before you get to the revised budget, um, is the budget that you're looking at have total expenditures of eleven six twenty-seven?
No.
Okay. Then we need to, to look at what, what filters or what parameters are, are on this and or that, so we can do kind of that crosswalk.
Okay.
So this is, uh, to, to be clear, this is a budget comparison going into last year sixteen seventeen at this time compared to going into the budget cycle of this year. And again, those are just budgeted numbers, they're not fiscal year end dates or actuals, and so they're not the audited financials that will be coming out once Johnson Block finishes their work.
But you, so you're saying last year ended with a surplus, not a deficit?
That is correct.
And that document suggests, yes, a deficit, but, so that confuses me. This is a document you sent out.
Right. Again, it only looks at, but you're, you're considering it because it over expended by two hundred thousand, you're assuming that's a deficit, but you're not looking at the revenues that came in to offset that. You're only seeing one half of the equation, you're looking at the expenditures only. So we filter in all of the revenues that come in, and our revenues outpaced our, our projected revenues, that's where we can say the yes. Overall, the budget did come in, so, and you'll see that reflected again, uh, in the, in the financial audit that will come forward. We'll show that there was, um, savings that were transferred into Fund Forty-Six that were excess dollars above and beyond the budgeted amount.
So you're, what you're saying is the revenue amount that you had projected for this year at twelve point one could change.
Absolutely will change.
It won't go down.
Right.
But it can go up.
It could go either way, let's just take, this other revenue, for instance, is, is user fees. And there's a lot of things that are wrapped up in there, um, sport user fees, workbook user fees, those kinds of things. It's a small piece of revenue, but it's a budget going in that says, on average, we expect this much in revenue in, in user fees, sport, book cover. That number is going to flex up and down. The other piece that comes in is the open enrollment tuition. We do get a partial open enrollment tuition, um, back paid for students that open and enroll after the beginning of the year. And we can only budget that to the best of our ability. We know that on the average, we pick up a few kids, but do we actually pick up more or less, we don't know. There is another piece to this, which is the third Friday January count, what is our enrollment in January? Again, it could be up or down, which would again affect the state aid revenue. So there's a lot of different pieces that we'll continue to move inside of this. But to the best of our ability, we're, I'm pretty confident that this number stays pretty, pretty close. Give or take a little bit of, of wiggle, but, um, it's not going to waffle by a half a million.
So you mentioned being able, that you anticipate being able to have it balanced by the end of the year. So where do you anticipate being able to find about a hundred and forty thousand, since it, it isn't going to, you know, fluctuate substantially?
As I look at the budget, there's no place to just reduce a line item by a hundred and forty. There's really no opportunity to reduce the line item by even half of that, sixty or seventy thousand dollars. There's just not that kind of a money in the budget. However, what we know annually is that when we have a lot of accounts that, uh, budget for instructional materials times sixty teachers, that not every of them, one of them spends down to the last penny. There's five dollars or fifty dollars or five hundred dollars of unused dollars, that when they get pooled together typically have always been in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the other places that I would look for some savings is in utilities, but that is risky, because in cold winters, it's more, and in warm winters, it's less. Uh, we have been pretty favorable in the utility department as of the last two years. I would look at our legal fees, and I would look at our workers' compensation. Uh, those claims have been fairly healthy, but we do carry a balance in both of those areas for the unforeseen, um, need to, to use legal fees or have an unfortunate claim in workers' compensation. Those are probably some of the, the quick go-to areas, but really, it's, it's not putting all of our stock in just those buckets. It's really looking at all of our teachers, and, and we've shared the budget scenario with them, that we all want to focus on our needs and try to be fiscally responsible this year, and do our part, each and every one of us, to, to regain those dollars over the, the course of school year.
So we talked a little bit about this last month, but I think it's worth, one, staying, stating, and I think I would like to, um, sort of emphasize that it's really important, and I think it will help us as board be a bit more effective and, and partner better, but the process in which requests are, um, considered. Talk us through that.
Sure. In March, we start to solicit requests.
Do you want to bring, do you want to bring that up too?
Yeah, sure. Um, I don't have, it's.
I'm sorry, let me be clear. Individual teacher request, so just so I, as long as we're, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, I want to make sure.
There's a, a document that I've shared with the board in the past. Kelly is a new board member, received it upon request. It's the budget development timeline. And, um, essentially, in, in, the process starts in January. We're starting to identify opportunities for, uh, savings, as well as places where we know we're going to have some additional needs or expenditures. But from a teacher's perspective, that process begins closer to March, when teachers are asked to solicit their requests, uh, for the following year. Those requests are sent to the building principal, who reviews those requests in the month of March and April. And based on those requests being filtered through the principal, it is then passed along to our bookkeeper, Marcia Jellin, who then starts to build a preliminary budget around those request items. As that budget goes forward, typically, we know our dollar amount, and we can make reductions to those requests to make sure that we have a balanced budget. And this year, uh, as you know, we didn't receive our state funding level until well into September, almost a quarter of our fiscal year into the school year. So we carried that preliminary budget forward and went into the September months. And at that point, some purchases had been made, some were still in the queue, and all purchases that, um, were in the queue were again be looked at, and then will continue to be looked at as they come forward throughout the school year. In a normal school year, the reductions would have been made on the front end, uh, to, to meet the balanced budget prior to July one, when we, we start to have a, a new fiscal year. I think that can be done next year with some certainty, in that we know what our revenue limit is, although there's some discussion at the state level about putting some more money in for rural schools. But, um, to the point that we know with some confidence next year, we should be able to, uh, screen those requests and filter them out to the point where we've said yes or no, and prioritize those needs by building level.
So my question was, um, when I talked with you was, um, why are teachers in here at the end, and we're asking questions? And I think we all have good questions, but I think we're asking at the wrong time, that I think that should be done in March. Because when this comes through, everything should have been, should be agreed upon unless there's any late things that happen through the state budget. So what happens is like the last time when we went on and asked teachers questions, that, to me, that just seemed absurd, that at the end, they come in and we ask questions. That should be done in March, after which, after the, um, the reviewing the staff for inclusion in the preliminary budget. That's when we should come in and ask those questions, so, and then the teachers would prepare to ask questions like, you know, is, how did you come to that decision? Without us managing their curriculum, there are important questions that we could ask them. You know, like, is it gender, you know, is it gender things? I mean, there's just things about education that we want to know if they're up on, and so those kind of questions should come in in March. And then, in April, um, what happens then? If there's something that we have to go back to, or that further explanation? Does that make sense to everyone? We're all asking the right questions, we're asking them at the wrong time, and we look stupid, because it goes on and on and on. And it all should be upfront.
Yeah, and that's no fault of the board. I think what happened, again, remember, last year is the first year that we put in the threshold for the five thousand dollar review of preapproval. So prior to that, the budget development didn't really have that threshold of, uh, a request may or may not get consideration from the board. Uh, it was really scrutinized and, and filtered at the administrator and superintendent level. And now there's another layer there that I think it is appropriate for the board to weigh in on before it goes into the budget and becomes part of the preliminary budget. So to your point, I agree, I think in April, uh, March to April, when we start to prioritize those requests, some of those will get filtered out at the building level, because there's only so many dollars. We know what those dollars are this year, where we didn't know last year. So we didn't really filter anything and say that, that's not going to go, because there might be money to fund it. This year, when we get to that level, then those items that are above five thousand would come back to the board in, let's just say, April to May as part of the pre, pre-preliminary budget. The board would say yes or no to those, be included or not, and we, we bring them for a, a final balanced budget. Um, in, in June would be my appropriate timeframe, I think, for a preliminary budget. That allows us to walk away for the summer, when our fiscal year starts in July, we can start to make purchases in preparation for the school year. The big ticket items have been vetted by the board, and we have a preliminary budget that, that we go forward with.
So then, in September, we don't have teachers.
You shouldn't have to, right?
We shouldn't, we shouldn't have teachers in here for questions. Those, that should be done way upfront, and without, and without abusing, us abusing, you know, you know, curriculum attitudes or anything like that. I mean, there's, there's, there's education questions that we have, or there's, you know, cost, or how did you, how did you come to that decision? So we also want to know if those teachers are making a thorough investigation of what's out there, how much it costs, and if, you know, and having that discussion with their administration, you know, administrator. So it makes, you know, it makes everyone more informed.
My, so my question is, should we then, so I, I don't disagree with anything that you're saying. So I'm just, I'm trying to like get it back to, from a, like a board goals perspective. So it sounds like I would, I believe, based on the timeline that we're talking about, as a board, we should be doing our front-end work about goals that we want to set for the following year, ahead of that. Because T, I mean, I personally feel like if, if the administrators and the principals know what we, you know, where we think based on the data from the school year that we're looking at, where we think we're going to go next year, and we set those goals, that, then they are going to make purchasing recommendations based on what they believe they can do to meet those goals, right? So.
So we wouldn't have had that discussion about the handheld computers. We would have had that not last month, we would have had that in, um, March, or, you know.
Yep.
Okay.
And they would have been able to say, I think clearly, those teachers and those administrators would have been able to say, based on the goals that you guys established as a board, and the strategy, and the, and the, um, like, the way you guys are going to hold whether we're successful or not, and the way we're going to be held accountable, we believe we need fifty iPads to make that happen. Here's why, we're going to use this kind of software. You know, like, giving us enough detail to say, okay, so basically, you need this one, you need the goal that we have set, because the community entrusts us to set the goals for the district. So then when we say, sorry, we're not going to give you sixty, we're going to give forty, we then are saying, though, basically, that if, they have to go back and find a different recommendation to still meet those goals with.
With what we've been able to, yes, yes.
So I, I, so I think that in order for us to make sure that happens in March, we as a board have to understand what we're going to be marching toward and what we're going to be holding them accountable to the next year before that. Right? I mean.
And I think, are we at some point going to hear about the goals that have evolved from the strategic plan?
Right, that'll be probably November fourteenth.
So I do wonder if there's a cadence issue, I mean, if we have it set up a little bit backward, maybe, I don't know. Because, I mean, sometimes we reorganize closer to the election, which is after what you're talking about. It's usually in April or May, you know, by the time people are, where we have a meeting, where we talk about what the board is going to do, because there could be new members.
When's the technology budget presented to the board?
I typically share that in, in the month of February. It's just prior to the teachers', um, requests, and partly that is to try to lock down some of those bigger ticket items that we know capital is usually one of those, uh, that we've tried to narrow down in the, uh, have, in the recent past, it's been kind of challenging, because there's a lot of moving parts to the capital budget. The technology budget is the second piece to that, um, and then we try to build in our maintenance budget around that. And then, once those three things are kind of locked in, we kind of know, uh, what we, we have for needs in the next school year, then we can look at building allocations and actually give dollar amounts to each building as a number not to exceed, and then they can start to prioritize their requests.
It seems to me that the technology budget should somehow involve the teachers', um, needs. Because I don't understand, you know, we approve a technology budget, and then the teachers have their own technology needs. I, I don't understand how they're not, I mean, that should be viewed as a bigger picture, um, you know, so that you don't have different technology that doesn't correspond from one grade to the next. I mean, and I'm not saying that it does, but from a board member perspective, you know, when we approve technology, at one point, that's all good, and I like that we bundle that together, and that we give that the, you know, overall view from the district. But then when technology requests come in, month to month, that confuses me, because I thought we approved a technology budget. So can we do some sort of change so that we're not getting piecemeal, pieces of technology throughout the year?
Yeah, what you're seeing is a reflection of a couple of things at the building level. So we, we typically have budgeted technology spent at the district level, looking at bigger, uh, school building needs across the district. But, um, to that point, then you have a, a pool of dollars, there are really two pools of dollars. One is the dollars that are allocated at the building level, and sometimes the building chooses to use those dollars toward technology to go deeper or further than the district initiative might go. The other dollars are what are called the common school fund dollars, that can only be used in the library to service kids, and oftentimes, be used in the library to service kids and oftentimes they go further in technology or maker spaces or some of these other things that are part of the library resource itself. So there's two separate budgets that are building based that doesn't necessarily have the, it has oversight by the district, but it's not built at a district level, it's built at a building or even a teacher level. And so those are some of those dollars that, let's just say the elementary billing is $150,000 and the high school is $150,000. If they want to carve out 10 of that to go a little bit further in a technology initiative, that's the latitude that I've given the principals and those educators to be able to do. And some of those requests that you received coming back.
Can that be changed?
It can be changed.
So that it's, it's more, they're working together and they come with, to us with one overall technology budget that incorporates the desires of the building principals and teachers' needs.
And so we will know upfront if they want 10 handhelds in kindergarteners' hands. And then that can get questioned then instead of after the fact.
Yeah.
So is the only thing that then would, would possibly be, you know, require an adjustment in that be if we have a bunch more kids enroll over the summer or we hired another teacher? You know, like we rearrange, I mean, there, there will be times when we will possibly be outside of that based on initiatives. The goals themselves shouldn't change, but like, you know, Mitch or Big Ear, whoever may have a different initiative working with a team that says, okay, we hadn't done this sort of one-to-one methodology before, but we, we're going to try it now, we think that it's important, here's why. We should be looking at the data to understand it and then decide whether it's okay to go above and outside of our technology timing or not. Does that sound reasonable?
As long as we understand what initiative is and it's explained.
Yeah.
Well, and how it relates back to the overall.
Overall, the overall goal. Does that make sense? We'll, we'll look a lot smarter.
Under expenditures, open enrollment tuition, kids opening enrollment out.
Yeah, so that would be the fees. Part of the, the increase there is not because we have more kids open and rolling out, but the fee per kid went up. And so we are now spending $6,838 per kid rather than $6,748.
And that's reflected in the revenue side. There was that additional fee. All right. Second question, Luke. On salaries there, if I did my math right, five and a half percent increase, that reflected the, the new base for support staff.
Yeah.
And that should not be five and a half moving forward?
No.
Okay.
No, that'd be on average across all employee groups, which would include support staff. There was a built-in increase in the salary schedule for certified teaching staff as well as administrative staff. So yeah, on average, you'd be looking at that across all categories. But the, the majority of the increase this year was founded the support staff restructuring of their salaries.
Okay. What's included in non-capital?
You have any item that would be less than $10,000. So you've got instructional materials are included in that. You could have small technology, furniture replacement, and instructional materials. So everything in the 400s and the 500s, 500s would include replacement equipment.
Okay.
And new equipment, a $100,000 increase, is there a reason for that? It's just a shift that bases the, the needs based on requests from teachers?
Okay, all right. So walk us through your, your budget and your protocol if we do not get a balanced budget by year's end, what will happen?
So if we did not have a balanced budget by year, and in other words, our expenditures outpaced our revenues, as would be in any year, we would use our fund balance as our local bank that we would borrow from to make sure that we have a balanced budget, or we would just reduce the fund balance in that given year. And then we certainly could budget going forward in subsequent years to either replenish that fund balance. If the board would choose, that would probably be what I would recommend. Our fund balance stays and remains relatively healthy right now. So we do have some opportunities to, to borrow from it should we have a shortfall.
When was the last time we borrowed from fund balance or had to go that route?
The first year that I arrived, the budget that I inherited in the 2011, '12 school year, which was created in 2010, '11, borrowed, I believe it was $600,000 to meet the structural deficits on the shortfall for salaries and operations. And we have not, to my knowledge, borrowed from fund balance in those six years since I've been here.
So not since the referendum?
Correct.
Have you had to go into fund balance?
Correct.
Wasn't half of that was because of the buyout of the teacher retirement? Because we took that out of fund balance that year.
Certainly, that was, I agree, I think there's a good chunk that came from that, you're right.
When we hired the, made the decision to hire the first grade teacher, correct me if I'm wrong, I remember you saying that we would still be able to have a balanced budget for this year.
And I want to say in the same breath, certainly over a biannual budget, that we would balance the budget in that I was still confident that we could get there and I still believe we can in this fiscal year. I believe that at the end of the year, when you look at actuals, that we will have a balanced budget. The other piece that I had shared with the board is that if we weren't able to balance it, because this is a biannual state budget, I certainly can bi, balance it over a biannual budget. In other words, if we were short $25,000, we would budget knowing our dollars that we have already from the state for next year in our biannual budget, we would just budget to all but, or totally fulfill that $25,000 shortfall in next year's budget and pay it back to fund balance in that one case.
If, if this budget was not approved tonight, could you rework it and get it to the point where it's balanced?
Absolutely. You know, we can, we can move numbers around and reduce things from certain areas where we know we have known expenditures and the budget going into the year will show that it's balanced. But you'll still have expenditures that are going to come regardless, and those expenditures most likely will exceed the budgeted amounts. And at the end of the year, I still believe it'll be balanced, it just may not be balanced out of the account that we choose to create the balanced budget line item from. If that makes any sense.
Could you give us an example of?
For example, you could look at expenditures in capital, which is $206,000, and we could reduce that budget line item by $139,000. We would have a balanced budget. That would leave roughly $70,000 in there for a dust collector, which would be a little bit more than that. It would not leave any money in there for the roof remediation or the, the security entrance at the elementary, which we most likely go forward with or not if the board didn't choose to, to continue with those projects. The budget would be balanced. Fiscal year end, we may have $100,000 left over and then we would put in a door or we would look at remediating the roof. So, you know, it's, you know, we certainly can, can draw up the budget to make it reflect balanced by just changing some line items around. The question is if it's going to change any of our expenditure habits that we have in the queue right now.
My concern is that if, if this budget goes through, it, it's going to put the onus on the board to scrutinize the bills payable that come through every month more than we already do in an, in an attempt to look for the savings. Whereas if, if you were to balance the budget, if you were to go back and you do what you need to do to make it so that it's balanced, we could say every month, well, do these expenses, are they within the budget that you created? And then we don't have to apply as much scrutiny to it.
In any given year, you're, I'm right where you are. The only difference is this year, we were four weeks into the school year before we knew whether dollars were. And so some of those expenditures already have been made or committed, and so we would be just more on paper getting it balanced, but I'm not sure it would, it would actually ease the, the scrutiny of the, the expenditures. But if, if that's the board, that's fine. If the board wants to, to do that, I would suggest we start with capital objects and we would just reduce that by the 139. We can do that by just, we haven't approved the budget, so you can make that change as an amendment.
I just want to clarify, so I think based on what you just said though, if Luke went back and adjusted numbers to be now, even though he just sort of admitted it would not necessarily be a meaningful change, it would just be removing one and then hoping that you're going to be off later, are we, I mean, so, so we wouldn't be scrutinizing the bills payable then? I mean, is that to, to the level that we've already been bill, been scrutinizing bill payable for a number of years? Because I don't know that our behavior changes based on Luke's rearranging some numbers just for our own security upfront versus us taking him in his word that it will be balanced by the end of the year and that we hear that and are like, great, because we're going to hold you accountable to that because you're saying that you'll do it and we hired you to make sure that our finances are taken care of and that our school is fiscally sound. I, I just don't know that, it might give us comfort now, but I don't know that, one, our behavior does change in terms of scrutiny of bills payable. And if he's telling us he will balance the budget, we shouldn't be scrutinizing this stuff anyway. We should be scrutinizing whether the budget is getting balanced or not by looking at reports or looking at the numbers more. Maybe that's the finance meeting, committee meeting where we're every two or three months going in and he's explaining where he's shaving numbers off rather than doing it now and then putting the ownership on us to scrutinize at the bill level. I don't know if that, at the bills payable every month.
Well, and I think what happens is that a lot of those questions about the bills payable come at the board meeting when they could be asked, you know, through an email and get answered then. You know, unless it's a major discussion or you're trying to make a point. But, you know, a lot of time is wasted during the meeting when those questions could be pre-asked and pre-answered to.
When you submit this budget, Luke, to DPI, you, you cannot submit a budget with a $139,000 deficit. So essentially you, you are saying that we will borrow from balance.
Yeah.
Because you need a, you need a net zero, correct?
Right, the, the, well, you do not have to show a balanced budget. For instance, in 2010, '11, when I came in to the district, you had purposely budgeted for a shortfall of about $600,000 for operations that you were taking from your fund balance. So that was the budget going in. You're just, you're telling DPI, I'm reducing fund balance by that amount. And, and that's going to be used for operations. This is not the case in this, so you don't have to set up a zero. You do have to for fund 50, you have to show a balanced budget, that is a required DPI rule, but you do not have to for fund 10. At the end of the day, the, the budget is just that, it's a proposal of what you think is going to happen as a snapshot going into the school year. The fiscal year actuals are when you would actually borrow from fund balance at the end of the year to cover a shortfall. And that's what you report up to DPI as the final, what happened at the end of your year, did you use fund balance or not?
And that gets reported when?
Post-July.
Yeah.
I mean, we have to go fiscal year end and then March, there's some reporting.
So if we went down Lisa's proposed path by coming up with a net zero right now, again, I think it would, it would, certainly for myself, I'd feel better and it wouldn't change these numbers at all. Your, your capital projects could stay in play, non-capital, whatever. If you're comfortable with these numbers, you should be able, you should be able to get us a zero balance budget tonight.
Don't you think we should maybe explore different options for how to get to the zero balance? I mean, rather than just lot, lot $140,000 from one, I mean, are there other options for how to get there? I mean, perhaps a finance committee meeting is in order to discuss the options?
Yeah, DPI requires that we have an approved budget by November 1st. So that would have to happen, we would have to reconvene and approve the final budget. What I would suggest is that you approve the budget that's before you tonight and the finance committee work to amend the budget because we amend the budget throughout the school year every year. There's things that happen, changes that we budgeted for here, we actually make the expenditure out of there. And DPI actually requires the board, whenever we cross funds, to amend the budget formally in the form of a board meeting with approval. So I would just suggest that we come back and amend the budget to reflect it to be balanced after we approve it. It's the same process, it's just then we're not being rushed to get this second meeting in before the 1st of November. We're on the 23rd of October.
And when Laddie and Andy, those two are on the finance committee?
Correct, Andy's the chair and Laddie is the co-chair, if I'm remembering correctly.
And so if we were to, to vote on it and then have with the amendment in it, you would meet with them and they would come back and report to us?
Well, you're all invited to.
Yes. But what I've learned is that if there's more than four at those meetings, then we should be, we should be filming that, that's a meeting in those committees.
Yeah, if there's a forum, yeah, I think, and we're aware of that. Typically, if there's been a forum, we haven't maybe videoed, but we're aware that it's a actual meeting. I, I guess, I, I'm having a hard time understanding the, the difference. I mean, I, I think from a security, from a comfort level, it makes sense to me why you guys are in that spot. I, I'm just, I don't know.
Would it be something as simple as dividing all the employees and taking so much from each of their budgets and just getting an equal balanced budget? I don't know how many, you know, dollars everybody has, it's probably prorated, but take a percentage from each one and say this is what you have to deal with and kind of put it back in. Their laps is their responsibility to put their focus on what they feel is most important.
I feel like that would be tough because I think you'd get, I think you run the risk of taking things out of the classroom that we don't want to do. And I, like when Luke says lawyer fees, things like that, I'd rather find those items that are soft, that aren't affecting directly the, you know, what the teachers have already planned in their classrooms for the year. I'd rather look at those other things than the budget. And have the finance committee look at those. I'd prefer to do something like that.
So, so it, so based on Luke's comment about the, the changes that can happen with revenue as well, I mean, I, I don't know that it would make a, to me, I'm having a hard time understanding how one finance committee meeting now to maybe try and shave things off, or if we should set up some sort of, you know, budget check-ins where it's, maybe it's the committee, the finance committee only, but, or maybe it's a board committee to say, how are we doing? Because I think we all know we're in a position where it's tight and it's going to require us to dip into fund balance. And we should be very mindful of what, what's going on with our budget and where we're coming in from a revenue and expenditures standpoint. So whether that's every six or eight weeks or something, that, you know, I mean, whatever the cadence is that would be meaningful to you with like reporting and information. I, I mean, we have the meetings every month, but it isn't like we look at the overall budget every month. We look at line items, which then become, I think, some of, what, a distraction over what we're doing overall. We get bogged down with the nitty-gritty instead of the, you know, overall.
If we ask you to take away $100,000 of this deficit, Luke, is that possible? If the board gives you that direction tonight?
Just take $100,000 away from expenditures or revenues or, because you can add more revenue in as much as you can reduce expenditures.
Just minor, just reduce it by 100,000 and you, you the latitude to do it.
Yeah, I can amend the budget to do that.
We'd still show a $39,000 deficit. We had a $23,000 deficit last year and we ended up with, I guess, at, well, at least $100,000 surplus in the fund 46, I think it was a little more. So uncomfortable that, that the numbers do change and there is some comfort that I'm willing to, to roll with a, a smaller deficit, but not a $139,000 deficit.
But we have a $139,000 deficit. Whether you put 100 there or Luke puts zero there, we are about 140 in the hole.
If, if we'll change these numbers, then we, on, on this proposal is a $39,000 deficit, not a $139,000 deficit. That's what we live up to now.
I don't know that it is only though a $39,000. I don't know that it is only, though, a $39,000.
I don't know that.
You've only spent 25% or so, you say, right? Or something like that?
We're 25% of the year in, but probably more than that in 10% of expenditures because of what already comes up front. But there's no one line item that I can reduce by $139,000 that doesn't already have things committed to it.
Right.
So.
It would involve multiple line deficits.
Where are your non-capital items? Where's all that coming from?
In the 400 and 500 series, which would be instructional materials, replacement equipment and new equipment.
It has come to plan with money, huh? $100,000 more this year, nice year? No way of cutting that.
We certainly could look at reducing some of those capital, yes. Again, we're into the school year. Some of that's already been spent. Some of that is forthcoming and, you know, we can go back to the billing principles and they can go back through the budget requests and start to reduce requests that are in the budget right now. The teachers, we're gonna make the expenditures for it.
Do we have any motions to move this forward? Advice is, Luke, what would you like? I will not support a $139,000 deficit.
And I struggle with rearranging numbers just for the sake of rearranging them, but I would support having some sort of check-in where we are monitoring at a higher level the budget, rather than the bills. I mean, we'll still be checking on bills payable. I'm not saying we aren't doing that every single month. But where the finance committee and Luke, or the entire board and Luke, are sitting down to really monitor where we're at in terms of the $139,000 deficit.
I'll react to however the board wants me to move forward.
Should we go around and just see how people, I mean, there's.
Well, your proposal to eliminate, not jockey numbers, eliminate $100,000.
$100,000, correct. At Luke's discretion.
Not jockeying around, but eliminate.
This is my first time, so I'm.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Jeff.
Well, I kind of tend to agree with Julie that it's like all we're doing is playing with numbers. And, I mean, our history shows that whatever Luke has given us, we have the scene to be able to bring it into the surplus. And I guess I would consider voting for this as long as he gives us his assurance that he's going to really sharpen that pencil and cut some things out if possible. I mean, you can't cut needs out. Wants, definitely, but needs, we gotta have. How about the community service fund? You can look at, you've got 20 extra thousand in that. Can we go back to the 75?
That's outside of the Fund 10, so that wouldn't impact that.
Oh, why?
It's levied outside of the revenue account. So any changes to the community service fund, Fund 80 doesn't impact Fund 10 or 27?
Can I make a motion to that?
No, I'm not willing to make a motion to this.
I'll make a motion to put the budget as recommended.
Yeah, motion by Julie. Go ahead, second.
I'll second.
Second, Kelly.
Let me just clarify what my motion is.
Sure.
That to recommend or to approve the budget as recommended with, which is what he states in here, that, you know, the adjustments throughout the year, he believes is going to be a balanced budget. So that we, the intent is not to have a deficit when we close out our books next year because we're gonna be mindful, based on the comments about approvals and things like that, whether they change their directives with teachers, then through principals, then through him, to wants not necessarily being prioritized, but needs only. And I think then it's ownership of the board as well to be checking in to see where are we at. So we don't feel like we're surprised at the end of the year if we do end up owing 20 grand out of fund balance.
You would suggest that maybe ever since it grew, so maybe every other month we'd have a report and say, "Okay, we've got $1,000 saved over the last eight weeks."
To that point, we can even put an amendment in the board packet to amend the budget to remove that expenditure from certain areas that we know that we're using them for savings and put that into a fund that will be, or will drive accumulating up to the full amount that's reflected in the shortfall.
I feel like on some level, what we're doing with that is pushing off work that we should be doing now. I mean, this is a budget, so this is the goal, these are goals. And if, it seems like the goal should be set now for where the money should be spent. I think making a complicated process going forward.
Yeah.
I don't know that it's any more complicated than us scrutinizing at a very, a different level with bills payable than setting up another meeting to really see at a higher level where we are coming in at and where is the revenue is maybe offsetting some of that as well. I mean, I think if we're going to keep our process the same where we scrutinize every single bill, yep, probably I'm adding one more complication to it. But I feel like maybe removing that and giving that to the people that own it, which is the teachers who are requesting, the principals who are approving, Luke who is getting it to us, and then we say, "That's fine. I mean, it sounds like we're approving that, but meanwhile, we have $140,000 gap we're trying to close and we are holding you to that."
How are we holding them to it? I mean, this, our opportunity to hold people to it is right now. We are charged with passing a budget by a certain date. You know, I think a lot of us here want this budget to be balanced. This is the time to hold people accountable, in my view.
All right, here's your, now, if you're gonna change, rotate trade-off just to make it work. No, to eliminate what has to be done to make it work, to balance it. At the end of the year, we can, we're not balanced, then what?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what we, I mean, at the end of the year, he can put zero on this paper now and cut $100,000 out and we still might not be balanced.
But I think for the, looking at it then or is now?
I'm not sure I understand what you just said.
Well, if I project the loss right now, wait till it happens.
So react to it then.
Right. If something comes up, we need to spend more money, we'll hold on to it and do it.
But I feel like because, it's probably just semantics. I don't know. Maybe it's just six or eleven, half a dozen of the other. I don't know. Maybe we're saying the same thing.
It seems less likely that you would spend more than your revenues if you set a budget that is equal to the revenue.
So I recommend to help get past the impasse. I'm hearing the board would feel more comfortable with a balanced budget, whether it be at the beginning of the year, the end of the year. We all agree we want a balanced budget. And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that at all because that's what I'm saying. We're gonna deliver to you at the end of the year. So again, I would recommend for purposes of reporting the DPI at the November 1st deadline, just to approve this budget. In the November board meeting, I'll bring back a series of amendments to that budget that will show you a balanced budget that reduces the current budget by the amount 139,912. And it will come from various sources, revenues, expenditures combined. And it will then reflect a balanced budget as of November going forward. It doesn't change anything with the levy because that's still the same cap. It just gives me time to work on this. I'll work with the finance committee to vet it before it comes back to the board in November. And you'll have a balanced budget.
I think that's reasonable.
We'll have to re-vote then.
We have to vote.
We have to vote as motion.
We'll have to re-vote again then.
You'll have to vote to approve the amendment to the budget.
And you'll try and spread that around Luke so that he don't have to do it all in capital, for example?
I, without really getting in there with a scalpel, it's hard to say. But yeah, absolutely, I'll try not to impact just one entity or one area.
So what was your hesitation or reason that you didn't bring us a zero budget? Based on what you know about us as a board in this, anyway?
Certainly think about a budget. A budget is what you propose going into a fiscal year. And every year that we've worked together, we've had the opportunity to do that work with known amount of revenue. And what changed this year is we were already into the school year doing the work. And then after that, we're asked to put the budget together. Now that we know the numbers, we're already line item things out. We've got expenditures committed. It's not as easy to kind of move around these numbers and pull a little bit here and there because essentially, Marshall might go through 65 accounts, changing a 2,000 to a 1,500 and a 1,500 to a 200. And that's just, it's time. At the end of the year, what I envision is that we will have potentially a balanced budget going in. At the end of the year, we have $140,000 more of expenditures than what we budgeted for. So we're over and we have $140,000 in excess revenue that offsets that. And so we're still at fiscal year actuals as being zero. So we're approaching the same end just from different ways. And it's whether you want to go into the year with the comfort that it is balanced on the front end or the comfort that, you know, at the end of the year, it will be balanced. It's fine with me either way.
I mean, I think this year was just an anomaly because of how it ended up.
That's the only reason it didn't get done sooner is because we didn't have our state revenue sooner. So, you know, we're struggling here because of the state's inability to do its ability or to do its job on time. I mean, that's what it comes down to. If I had the numbers when the state budget and the legislature said they would have them, we would have proposed a balanced budget. But we're here where we're at, where we're at, and we'll go forward with. That's what I'm hearing from the board.
So we have a motion on the table. Do you want to change the motion to reflect that language, Julie, or would you?
That will.
Have a balanced budget in November?
That we'll vote on the amendment to have a balanced budget in November. Is that how you say that?
Yeah. I'll bring that to mention as balanced budget in November.
Okay, so I still, though, I mean, I feel, I feel like the cadence of checking in on the higher overall budget is important and work that we should still be doing. So I, that's part of my motion, is that we are still monitoring this at a higher level than the bill's payable.
Every other month or every quarter?
I think every, however, I mean, from a reporting standpoint, what makes the most sense to you to be able to show us meaningful numbers to see how we're doing at staying at a balanced budget then, since that's what it will be?
We can do it, you know, monthly. We can put the budget on the agenda. We can do it quarterly. We can have finance committee looking at it in between meetings.
So, but what are we seeing finance every other month? I think that's reasonable.
Okay. I mean, I'm making a motion for something that Andy's committee is gonna do without him here, so.
It's all right. That's my number three.
Does my motion make any sense to the people that have to be able to regurgitate it? Okay.
Well, we're looking at them to vote on this as a group now. And back under the rule of amendment.
Yeah, well, we won't put on the amendment to have a balanced budget.
To create a balanced budget.
Yes.
And we are monitoring it at board level with the finance committee every other month?
So more work for the committee, but.
It should be that often, though. I mean, if we're making sure that we're sustaining, we're holding the people accountable.
And it will help when we get, when we get this piece of it now, earlier than what we've had before, this whole process should become smoother and more informed.
And as of this point, we know what our budget is next year. We know it right now. We can balance it right now. And when you don't know in your early school year, that's when things get great.
What do you want to do, or call motion?
So the motion I've got written down is to approve as recommended, which is currently the $139,912 deficit with efforts to make it balanced as we move through the year.
No.
With amendments brought forward in the November school board meeting to balance the budget.
To show down the budget.
Technically, though, this is the, this is the budget you're going to submit to DPI.
Seconded by Kelly originally? Okay. Stevenson?
Yes.
Bassington?
Yes.
Or, excuse me, Dolphman?
Yeah.
Gama?
Yeah.
Hey?
Yeah.
The, the levy? They won't, again, won't change.
They would not change, correct. Before we got to budget, I just wanted to share from what was posted in the paper to what is part of the actual budget. When we received the October 13th information, we realized that the, there was a decrease in our equalization aid. So because there was, I'm sorry, there was an increase in our general aid of $9,151, which caused a decrease of our tax levy of $9,125. Again, when the state gives you more money than you need to, you are, you have to tax less or can tax less. And so that trade-off was part of what we learned from the state in that final round of iterations is that what we had published two weeks prior didn't reflect that little bit of a shift in general aid that actually came in. So we were pretty close to actual. The other piece that we were not aware of is that the computer aid went down by $26. And that was something that we reflected in the final 2017 revenue piece for this. That was different than what was posted in the paper. So, again, it's good for taxpayers. Our overall levy went down based on the latest information by $9,000. In the, in the packet is the actual revenue limit calculation sheet. I won't bore you by going through this calculation. It is challenging and tedious to follow it, but it is there for public review. And more specifically, I want to turn to the levy. The levy, number comes up here. You'll see the 2016 levy and the 2017-18 levy. The equalized property value is what drives the levy and the levy is what drives the mill rate. And this year's levy was 321,869, sorry, 321,869,000. That's an increase of 4.7%. And we were going in flat or 2.5% at most. So the equalized value being higher than what we anticipated was healthy for our district and that if our property values are greater, then that means that we have to levy less in terms of mill rate. So that particular increase in our levy is representative of a 1.85% increase overall to the levy. That's a pretty modest increase overall to the levy, but it also does reflect a decrease in the mill rate from last year's $12.43 to this year's $12.09, or a reduction of 34 cents on the mill rate. So with our revenue caps in place, I would recommend that we certify the levy. And we do have our mill rate history here as well. So you can kind of see comparatively how our levy has looked over time, our budget over time and our mill rate over time. If you look at the levy itself, the 336 in equalized value, we haven't seen that type of property value. I mean, we can go all the way back to 2008-9 where it started to take a dip from 322, 322 million. And just now, last year and this year, starting to recover again to where our property values are where they were in '08, '09 and '10. Mill rate, the $12.09 reflects the lowest rate that our mill rate has been since 2014-15. And again, our levy is just now over 4 million. So the recommendation is to approve the levy as presented.
This document that you were showing, did it come from DPI?
It is some CAN language, yeah. I mean, it certainly could be wordsmithed and made a little bit smoother. But yeah, it's just CAN language that's been forwarded on over time.
From DPI?
I don't know the original origin of it.
And then what's in the numbers, the district?
District, yeah. Marshall and I. Actually, you've actually typed this up.
I type it up based on Marshall's numbers, yeah. And she pre, or puts her stamp on it several times.
You know, if there's certain things here that you'd like to line item out or rearrange, reorganize, we certainly can do that.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Do we have a motion to approve the levy?
I don't have a motion.
I'll start you off. Yes, I can validate it. Dolphin and Stashen. Local energy?
Bassing?
Yes.
Dolphin?
Yes.
Kamla?
Yes.
Hey?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Stoffes?
Yep.
I look forward to discussion.
With regret that I need to share with the board that Matt's, Renwick, our principal, his father passed away this morning. He was planning to be here today, but obviously he's attending the family. I know I've not been able to communicate that with all board members, so our thoughts are with Matt and his family as well as Dixie Dempsey. And she's working with the health of her mother over today and tomorrow. And I think she will be okay, but right now that's where her attention is as well. But I did want to share with the board just a quick reporting of there was an unaccounted for student last week and the follow-up report that happens. And if we want to bring Matt in at some point for further discussion, we sure can. But first thing I want to do is just bring this into the elementary building and kind of explain where we were, what was happening.
So we were sitting in our house, yeah.
Yeah. I guess I can't get any tighter than that. So here we are at the elementary and in the back, we have a situation where there were two boys that were playing on the playground. And we did have four certified staff, I'm sorry, not certified, teachers age and staff members outside, which put us at roughly a one to forty ratio, which is very appropriate for recess time period. The staff members were scattered throughout the area, but one of the recommendations that we'll make will be coming forward in that there were not staff that were present with their backs to the Oak Savannah, looking back up toward the school. They were more on the top of the hill, looking down and in the playground area, looking across. So when the, end of the day, this is the last recess in the day, the two students, and this could happen at any time, whenever a staff member were to turn their backs, but they retreated into the Oak Savannah area that was, I believe that would be south, no, that would be west of, south, oh, thank you, of the, of the area. When the kids filtered back into the building, up the hill and into the recess room, at the last hour of the day, they reported directly to their encores, which could be art or could be music. And as they went directly to those teachers, there was not a mechanism in place that accounted for their attendance. They just assumed that the kids come in together during recess, they walk together up to their classroom and they sit down. So their assumption was that the kid just wasn't in school that day when they had an empty chair. In the meantime, the kids were in the Oak Savannah area. They never left this area to my knowledge. They stayed within this confined space. And as the day wore on and the encores released to their classroom teachers who lined them up as either walkers or for the bus ride, they realized that there was a student that was in their class, went to recess, then checked to see if they were in encore and the answer was no. And then they realized they had a missing child.
Was it one or two students?
It was one student initially, which caused the inquiry to see if there was other students that were missing. It was quickly discovered that there were two students missing. So then it seemed to be more palatable that those two were together as they were seen playing together in the recess area. It still didn't take away the urgency of the situation. Staff members responded. We have a child find process that does involve all of the staff members going to designated areas, looking for children. That also alerted our first responders, which was the, obviously, our local police department, the EMS, the fire department were dispatched to assist with that. They stationed in the south parking lot area. Once staff had left the area, they had a staging area there and spread out more systematically. I was alerted to it very promptly by Principal Renwick that the child find was on. I concluded a meeting that I was in and started to parade around the fairgrounds area, working my way back towards Quick Trip and then across the street and down. As I came down at four twenty down Fifth Street and went to turn on Cothran, the EMS had pulled the kids out of this area of the Oak Savannah and they got into the vehicle and they drove them up to the top of the parking lot at four twenty. At four twenty, they were reunited with their parents. You know, the kids did have follow-up with Mr. Renwick and there's really no good explanation as to why they did what they did. I'm pretty sure that they won't do it again. There was a debriefing the following morning with staff at the elementary that I intended. Part of the changes and procedures that were implemented was that staff would have two staff at the end of our south end of the playground, looking north, as well as two on the north end, looking south. So we're crisscrossing and again, creating kind of a barrier for kids that may want to go into the Oak Savannah area. Other changes, obviously, were in attendance practices and procedures so that classroom teachers were physically having contact with art, music and other encores to let them know which kids were or were not in attendance that day. There still is a desire to look at changing the attendance module, which right now either says you're there, present in the morning or you're there, present in the afternoon. It doesn't have an hour by hour, much like the high school does because schools don't, or elementary kids don't transition hourly like a high school or middle school kid would. So their attendance patterns are present in the morning or present in the afternoon to looking at more of a, maybe an approach on how to have people in the encores actually be able to take attendance right through their classroom. But there is a system in place right now where classroom regular teachers are communicating with encore teachers by hour, which kids are going off to music and then they do or don't have in class. So I feel comfortable in the approach and the steps that were taken. I don't think that this was, it was a very serious situation, but it was one that had small corrections that I think can help to make sure that this doesn't happen again. I'm figuring to answer any questions that you have or clarify anything that did or didn't happen.
What time did the school realize they were...
Matt has a report put together with this timeline and unfortunately, because of the situation, wasn't able to bring it forward. But to the best of my knowledge, the kids came in from recess at two fifteen to their encores and roughly about three o'clock was when they realized that they were lining up to come back to their regular classrooms that a student was missing. And then by three fifteen to three thirty, the child find was implemented. And we did some cross referencing with transportation to make sure the kids were or were not on the bus to verify that they hadn't just gotten on and nobody knew that they were or weren't on the bus. So there was great communication going on with transportation as well. Again, the staging area set up probably no later than three forty-five with the kids come for at four twenty. There was some communication on Iowa County Confessions, obviously went across the police scanner. We were already well into our process of finding the child at that point. I know Joel sent some communications out quickly to parents of the elementary students or elementary building only for those that might be wondering why there were emergency vehicles in the parking lot. Can you share anything else about communications that was...
I thought it went really well. You know, you're never going to keep a scanner or something like that. So our number one priority is student safety before we try to communicate any sort of situation. I like the follow-up that we sent the following day, just to let parents know that there was no correlation between this and the attempted enticement the week prior, so.
Did the board feel communicated well enough? In that case, I didn't feel like it was necessary to go beyond an email and kind of keep it informed, design new information, but if you felt like it rose to a higher level where you wanted a direct phone call or other, you're not seeing that?
So I...
I'm sorry.
Yeah. I feel like what we got was good. I, I didn't check my email that night, that afternoon. So I found out about it from someone I worked with the next day because they had seen it on a staff person Snapchat. And so they weren't in this district. They had no relationship with the district other than they just knew I, so they came and said, you said a student? And then I checked my email the next morning. So I think from a, I don't know whether it's a, I don't think it should be a policy, right? But I mean, I think having some just, obviously, I don't know, behavior standards for like being careful about what you're posting because someone might, you know, might be giving the wrong impression of our district, right? And so I was like, oh, sure.
We don't have any control over what people do.
I think we had a talk about this.
But it was a, it was a staff person putting out their Snapchat.
Oh, a staff that said missing a student.
We had a talk about this sort of thing after the gas leak last year of staff members, so it might be timed up.
So I mean, that, and it was probably after the student had been found, you know? The timing was like, get three o'clock, like, oh, no. I mean, I think it was like, oh, my God, what an afternoon, wait, you know? But it, I mean, I found out through someone not related at all to the district because they happened to have a mutual Snapchat, you know? So again, maybe it was after school hours and you're right, you can't control that. But just to be mindful of people then get the wrong impression of what, you know, was going on or that it isn't, you know, they're not following up probably on that Snapchat to say like, oh, hey, here's the good news. Everything's all taken care of and everything's fine. It just maybe it alerts people. So that, that's the only thing, you know, it's just a mindfulness thing.
That communication should be directed at Joel's level, not a teacher level.
And that's...
Yeah, on their own individual, right?
Right, that's why we, that's why we have Joel.
At what point does the kids are missing, does a communication go out community-wide, notifying the community to look for, you know, like an Amber Alert? When, when would that have kicked in? I mean, it sounds like the kids were found before anything got to that point where it would have normally happened? Is that right?
Yeah. You know, we had pictures of both students that were sent out to all staff that were part of the child find. It was also fed to the local emergency group, the EMS and the fire and the police. At some point, I think when, and I would probably work with local law enforcement. Unfortunately, we've never got to the point where we have to determine now is the time we need to go wider. But at that point, we're probably working with local law enforcement that would summons the Amber Alert and take it to another level. So I will work with them to find out if they have a protocol for when that goes forward. We didn't feel that because again, two boys were missing together at the same time last seen together at recess, that we felt that this was something that, don't get me wrong, there is a lot of concern and even a little bit of maybe panic and anxiety given our recent events and a lot of relief and even some tears as kids were found. But at the same time, the indications were that they were in the area and it was just a matter of locating them. So it's a good question that I don't have an answer to, a long way of saying that, but I will look at working with Bob and Bill.
Matt was the process of finding that out for me when Luke called and said they got them, so we just stopped.
So my question is, and I don't want to come across insensitive or mean, but kids know not to pull a fire alarm in the school. Kids know not to bring a knife in the school. I mean, should this be tied to our kids? Because actually, you're putting a lot of people in danger when you have kids wander off like that. And at some point, kids got to know better than to walk off school grounds. Is, should that be communicated with the teachers? Maybe, maybe have a learning day, the first day of school saying, do not walk off school grounds unattended.
Yeah, we did have follow-up. The following announcements the next morning reminded all students that they are not to leave school grounds and go into the Oak Savannah unattended. Keeping in mind, these are young kids, seven, eight, nine-year-olds.
Third graders?
Yes, yeah. You know, old enough to know, but young enough to learn.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
I think they understood the gravity of the situation and my, my sentiment is that they may not have come out of the Savannah earlier once they realized the seriousness of a lot of lights and flashing vehicles. It might be better just to wait this out and let them go by, only to realize that they're not leaving until they find you. So at some point, I think, you know, they've, they've got the message.
Good.
So I mean, I feel like part of the, I feel like this, since my, my time on the board, maybe since I had the kids in elementary, so I don't remember exactly how it been, but this has come up, it seems like a number of times. So I mean, I, do you feel like that...
Do you mean kids going in the Savannah?
No. I mean, it's usually not two hours or whatever it was. But I mean, am I wrong? I feel like we hear this maybe once a year or maybe, and maybe that's common. But so like, that's where, is that common? And is this something that, that, you know, that we should just see that we're making an accommodation to make sure we have people that are facing the playground with their backs to the Savannah so they can see? But are there other things? I mean, is our playground not conducive? I mean, it's got a hill and it's got a, you know, a forest and a, you know? I mean, is there just stuff that, or are we completely within like what seems to be typical at elementary schools where kids wander off?
No, you know, anytime a kid wanders off, it's not typical, it's normal. And you know, there is that four-foot fence that separates the Oak Savannah by most of the playground and down by the swings, there's a place to get through by the sign and so forth. What's not typical is that anytime a staff member turns their back, a kid can zip and do something or be gone or those kinds of things. This is the first time that I've known kids to wander off during recess. Typically, it is, I didn't get on the bus, I walked home to somebody else's house. I didn't communicate it with somebody. Those kinds of things, even to our best of our ability, you think you have them all in line and march them up and one kid just kind of walks off before the lines got formed because they're going to do whatever they're going to do. So that's the part that I think will always combat. I will suggest that there were efforts to look at the camera system to see if we could find out in which direction the kids went when they were last seen and where we could see them at. In that particular case, we wouldn't have been able to pick up the kids across the playground. But there are entrances right now that kids could go out or sidewalks that kids could walk down that we don't have a clear viewpoint of. And it would help to have additional exterior cameras as well as potentially interior cameras to see if they did come back in through the building at recess or not. Because at least that lets us know that they ate it that far and they're somewhere hiding in the building rather than they went, they never made it back in, those kinds of things. I don't think we need to...
So was that ever on the safety?
It is part of the safety, security recommendations. Yeah, it has a lot of competing priorities with other capital needs. There's no plan right now to include more cameras, but at some point down the road, I don't think that that would be an inappropriate thing to add a few more cameras interior and exterior.
Is there a written report on this?
Yes, Matt has done a write-up on it. And he could certainly present it to the board. He's planning to present it to you tonight. We were not able to connect and I was not able to get the report.
Can you just ball read the file, the written report?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Before we do, I want to go backwards just briefly. We got into a discussion about the budget. And one of the things I shared with the board at our last meeting was just how does our spending compare to how our performance is and you look at per pupil spending? This is the five-site tool, which is part of Forecast Five, which is one of the questions the board asked about. Inside of this dashboard, there are a lot of different mini dashboards on student performance and salary and enrollment and so forth. This is under student performance and there is a dashboard I'm going to share with you tonight, which is per student spending and performance. When I open up this dashboard, what it does is it gives you a horizontal and vertical scale. And I'll explain a little bit about what that is and then how this relates to mineral point. So what you have is a, on the vertical scale, you have the average per pupil spending. And you can see right now it's thirteen thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars, the average per pupil spending. To iterate a point, I'm going to start to go back to two thousand thirteen. You'll notice that the average per pupil spending is going to change. It was twelve thousand two hundred seventy dollars. So obviously, as you look at per pupil spending, you want to be as close to the horizontal line as possible, even below it would be best. But you don't want to be up here on the high end of per pupil spending. Because on the other axis then, as we go left to right, is the scale for your accountability score on the district report card. So as you go further to the right, you're into the eighties and you're further to the left, you're in the fifties. So the idea then is you want to be as far to the right on accountability, high of the district score and as low to the bottom right as possible, being fiscally responsible of their per pupil spending. So the question is, how does mineral point rank in all of this? And we are in here, but to kind of clear this up, this is state level data. So I've created some comparables inside of here, which is CISA three, the contiguous districts around us with Barnabell. Looked at the Badger Conference, which is some of the outlying Madison area suburban schools. The enrollment of low-income ELL, this is an interesting tab that is the eight to ten schools across the state that are similar in our size and demographics with regards to special education needs and the amount of free reduced lunch for the low ELL population and low racial population. Iowa contiguous, that's the entire Iowa County Madison area in our district. So I'm just going to look at all of CISA three data. You can see a bunch of scatterings of how CISA three ranks across this area. If I pick mineral points in purple, it will highlight us so we can kind of see where we were. So in two thousand thirteen, I can tell you we're spending just roughly about fifteen hundred dollars more than the state average in the per pupil spending, twelve four... hundred dollars more than the state average in the per pupil spending, twelve four to thirteen ninety-one. So that's where we fell in accountability, we were a little bit left, you can see a lot of schools doing better than we were, but a little bit more. Some schools are spending less than us, for sure, some are spending about the same, few were spending more. If we fast-forward that over here to two thousand sixteen and just do the comparable, you'll see the mineral point has advanced pretty significantly in its accountability scores. The quick question is, well, who's this out here? This would be last year, by the way, because this year is still embargoed, there's Seneca, and there's Schlesberg, and two smaller districts that, I'm not sure I would consider them comparables because of their demographics and school size, district size, but they are CSAT three schools that have performance on the report card. The other piece that you'll notice, the state average of thirteen five is now, if I hover over, it's fourteen two, so we've cut that per pupil spending basically in half over what we were. We were about fifteen hundred dollars over the state average, now we're about seven hundred fifty dollars over the state average. So we're, we're bringing it back more towards state average per pupil expenditures, and we are moving the needle significantly in accountability score. Embargo data that I'll share with you later in the, in the closed session will give you a, a better snapshot even, even more so.
That's very cool. Yeah, this is the kind of data that I think is, help, I mean, it's really.
This is some areas where the board may want to go deep and say, well, okay, where comparatively are we overspending compared to other districts? You know, if we looked at each line item, we tend, I can tell you, we are over two standard deviations in our spending for water, which is a really big amount. When we look at how we, just one utility looking at water, for some reason, we spend a lot more on water than any other school district around the area. So that's interesting. So then you can investigate, well, why is that? I don't have a quick answer for you, I don't think we're running the water wheel excessively, but I would guess that we don't have a lot of low flow.
Toilets?
Toilets and, and low flush capacity and sinks with automatic on-off stops and these kinds of things. So those are some things to think about as to why maybe you want to look at that area.
Is the rate, or, or who, pretty much rate?
The water rate itself?
Or rate, about same.
I couldn't speak to.
You mean compared to other ones?
Water could be just more expensive than mineral point, that could be the answer. But I think the, the tweet piece is that one small example just gives you the opportunity to say, okay, what's going on here? Why is our expenditures here so much more?
So we could check that, that.
The finance committee meeting, we can dig into this.
So we could check it from operations, we could check it from, you know, in technology, everything, we could, micro.
One area that, one area that I would suggest is, is you were to look at why, and again, if you look at the accountability data, there's a thirteen, fourteen, and sixteen, remember, there was no report card in fifteen. So we had to skip a year there, where they just did a freeze. But the other area that I think would be of interest to the board is that one of the areas that we out, outspent our counterparts, even though we continue to remain around state averages in professional development. And we were almost a two-for-one in that strand from thirteen to sixteen, and we had some significant gains also in accountability. So one might suggest that our doubling in spending compared to our peers in PD translated in part to accountability scores. So there might be other factors, and we can dig into those as well. But I thought that'd be a sharing, a graph that's worth sharing, so I didn't want to get too far off the tangent. Back to, we are in business services. So approval of staff hire, committee has gone through the process, and Matt Renwick made a recommendation to myself to approve Tom Engel to a one-point-oh FTE physical education teacher position that will start the second semester. Tom's salary would be based on step four, he had a bachelor's, would be in the bachelor's name. His salary and benefits would be prorated, so it would be fifty percent of that final amount to the end of the year. Step four is forty thousand four thirty-nine. So as we look at potentially closing the budget, for example, Ms. Ricker's salary was much, much more than that, not much more, but there will probably be a savings there that will already start to close that budget gap as our budget changes, as we know more information. That would be one of the things I would look to, to try to shorten that budget shortfall. But that, that recommendation is before the board for approval tonight.
There were a few issues with, what I heard with the selection process, Luke.
I think there's a, I have a lot of questions to ask before this, before I want to approve this.
I would suggest moving the evaluation of a, of an individual into closed section.
Okay.
The, the purchase of five thousand. Yeah, the approval, there's a grant expenditure I shared with the board that was recently approved, that's for forty-four staff members to attend the PLC Institute in Madison this summer. The amount there is twenty-seven thousand five sixty. Again, that is not part of our operational fund ten dollars.
So go through.
Yeah, so it's, it's a block grant that comes through, so even if we did reduce the dollars out, it's not going to impact your fund ten that we're trying to close up. The grant was written specifically for staff to attend this PLC Institute, it was approved by DPI as an appropriate use of the grand dollars for that purpose, so I would recommend approval.
Does that cover the whole thing?
It does cover all of the registrations. There would be mileage and/or hotel, not everybody would stay overnight, there's some staff that have asked for that, and then the other staff that will drive back and forth, split probably fifty-fifty, and those dollars would be in a subsequent grant. So because this takes place in July of two thousand eight, yeah, two thousand eighteen, we can use additional grand dollars from the seventeen, eighteen school year to pay for the rest of that.
I see an email that there are school board members can attend.
Yeah, so if you would like to, as a school board member, attend that, we can increase the, the registrations. We haven't signed off on the agreement yet because it was pending board approval, but we could add a school board member registration to that.
What's the institute on?
It is on professional learning communities.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by, let me do a second.
Second?
Second by Kelly. And a discussion? Roll call?
Dolphin?
Yes.
Gahma?
Yes.
Hay?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
Stefas?
Yes.
And we'll move the staff hire into closed session.
We can talk about the evaluation of candidates for the physical education position in closed session.
Okay. Do, do we want to keep the?
I feel like if we're going to talk, I mean, if we're going to have, should, should Matt be here for that? I mean, this is his recommendation. I just feel a little uncomfortable getting into it without him here to.
You could.
Maybe it's about the process? I mean, you mentioned process, not Allison, so.
Um, it.
So then I, I, I would move to wait until we can talk, have Matt here. Obviously, it's not time-sensitive, he's going to start in the second, this position will start the second quarter, we have time to wait, so that Matt can be here as well to talk this, talk about the recommendation.
I think we could talk about it myself, but if you get a motion on the floor, let's see, there's a second? Is there a second?
Dolphin, what is the second?
No, this is two.
This, what is this two? Is it even a separate motion?
No, I think the, I'm not sure if there, what the motion was, did you catch anything?
I didn't catch a second on the move to closed session.
Because you do need a motion and a second to go to closed session, and that's a roll call, bro. We did have a motion.
There was no second to it.
I'll second the motion to go to closed session.
Before we vote on that, though?
Yeah.
Should we talk about, I mean, it sounds like this is a motion to go to closed session on something that we may not go to closed session on?
Right, so that would be the next piece is, you know, typically, you'd name why you're going in the closed session, and there's really three different pieces here, if I remember correctly.
You've got the embargoed school accountability data.
Yeah.
And then you've got performance of a different employee.
And then this matter, so.
So.
So you're moving in the closed session anyway?
You probably should take each one at a time, I guess.
So that's not legal?
Huh? No, that's, yeah, it's a program.
Okay, gotcha.
So do you want to withdraw the previous motion? Can you, can we do that?
So the motion on the table, Angie, is to go into closed session for the three items.
Okay. That's what, that's what you're wanting to amend to do?
The staff hire.
Okay.
The embargo data, and the performance of an employee. Now, do you, do you want to amend that motion, Julie, to remove the staff hire?
Yes, I think I do, until we have the person who made the recommendation here to at least be able to speak to it.
Is there a second to Julie's amendment?
I'll second it.
Second by Lisa. So we're voting on removing the staff hire from closed session.
But were you the initial person that made the motion to go into closed session?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I can't remember, I seconded it.
Or do you want to second that one then? Does it make a difference?
All right, so once again, voting on the motion to remove the staff hire from closed session. We will do a roll call, Angie.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Basting?
No.
No.
Gahma?
No.
Hay?
Yes.
Stefas?
No.
Motion for those two, those two, I'm not, I'm not committed.
All right.
Vicky was, Vicky, were you on the committee?
So your motion failed, Julie.
And Shrin was the end?
Okay.
Like, apparently, yeah.
Motion failed.
Motion failed.
So vote on the original motion to go into closed session with the three items listed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Julie opposed? Any, any other opposition?
No.
Okay.